The process to be true, right? They have to put your whole stance on. And he doesn't think it's going to be the process that he wants to pass for the government. For, so much we approve, then we can vote. So down there in this big corner here, right? We approve this, now they've started applying for the enforcement. And there says he's not sure of enforcement as well. Because they've worked on two of these before. So what he's asking is give me two weeks to get everything on place with the guy who spoke last night. He says they're out there. So make them in. We have a step by step process. So.
How was your day?
It's one place where shit, it's just a matter of time. We approve this today. We're not ready. But I just need two weeks to get, you know, and you can prove it. Like, I'd rather have us.
I thought we had all that stuff. The quality of life is special among.
But I think they're following each other. It's just a tradition.
I'm building a wall, which is.
All right. And, and that's real.
You guys are sitting too much too.
He doesn't have one for what he does as a speaker.
I know, he said she signed them in. You're about to do that?
Start the meeting.
Are you guys outside?
You guys are.
Thank you for everyone coming. We are going to call the September 7th city council meeting to order. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Here.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Here.
Councilmember Zayjack?
Here.
Chairman Spanbauer?
Here, thank you. Please stand so we can recite your prayer. In the place. And, and your prayers.
Oh God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech thee in the wisdom and knowledge to guide and direct the deliberations of this council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may also redound to thy greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
Approve of the minutes from the council meeting of May 25th, 2022, special meeting June 13th, 2022, council meeting of June 22nd, 2022, public hearing June 29th, 2022, special meeting July 5th, 2022, and special meeting July 12th, 2022.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zayjack?
Yes.
Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, it's approved.
Okay, we have no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to public speaking portion of the meeting on agenda items and just a couple announcement rules for public speaking and meeting conduct. If speaking about an agenda item, please refer to the agenda item at the very beginning of your five minutes. And the last couple meetings, people have signed up for the good of the community or the agenda items, and they've signed up on the wrong sheet. So if you're called up for an agenda item, you do not mean to speak on an agenda item, that's okay, we'll just put you for the good of the community, speaks at the end of the meeting. Speakers are addressing the city councils as a body. If you would like to address an individual council member or anyone else, please do that separately, not during these meetings. Please remain focused on the agenda item you sign up for or for the good of the community. The council will not respond to questions or statements during the meeting. This is an opportunity for you to share your ideas. The portion of, this portion of the meeting is not for personal grievances. Please use decorum expected speaking before this body and/or attendance at this meeting. Please show respect for all individuals that speak at this meeting. As the chairman of the council, I am responsible for the enforcement of these rules. Fair to abide by these rules may result in the forfeiture of your speaking rights or removal from the meeting. Call first speaker, please.
Our first speaker is Kathy DuBois, agenda item number eight. Hello, Kathy DuBois, 1005 Creekside Drive. I'm calling, talking about agenda number eight. I think it's great we're going to get new trees, but I hope that we really consider get, really seeking out professional help. I know they planted all the Bradford pear trees, they all had to come out, and they did that at the state parks and that, that all the work now is that you plant native trees. We also, as we've taken down all these, spent all the money to get rid of the ash trees, should be looking for species of trees in consideration with the roads, the sidewalks, and the sewers, the root base and that, and I think that if we're going to plant them, it should be under that guise. And also, we could consider some reforestation over our city streets. If you drive around with your eyes open, you definitely can see now that the trees are down, the neighborhoods look crappy. So, not only should the parks be considered, but the neighborhoods should also be considered in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Todd Skelarski. Zalansky, Todd Zalansky. He's not present.
Actually, I see.
Oh, he's here. Okay, sorry, sir.
I think you got the name.
I'm sorry, what was it about the name?
Uh, Zalansky.
Yeah, I changed it to Zalansky.
No problem. I'm speaking on items five, six, seven, eight. I'm going to hit number eight first. First, for number eight, they are a ton of trees that are dead on all the roadways. We've called, I've heard all neighbors called, and it's not just my street, it's throughout the city, that there's a list taller than me to get the trees chopped down. Unless they fall on your house, and that happened this past winter. So, before we re-tree, we should detree those that are a problem. For number five, you know, I find number five a little bit interesting. If you look at the FIF, there's no contact name. So somebody filled out the FIF, there's no contact name. On item 15 of the FIF, it says there's no impact on noise, but if you look on the ordinance, noise is a problem. FIF 18, which you might want to look at, asks if the proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of importance in the community. I think we heard that there's structures that are important to the community. The question is, who is it important to? And why is the rush? The hearing was just yesterday, and it's being voted on today. In document 5B, it states noise is a problem several spots. 5B states in 1319.5.5, under conflict, legal mumbo jumbo to say we are always right, even if we are not right, we are right. In the event of a conflict between the section 139 and any other portion of the city of Niagara Falls, New York zoning section ordinance, the provisions of this section, 1319, shall supersede and govern, of course, this supersedes everything else that's ever been done. If any part of this ordinance amendment is for any reason held to be unconstitutional or invalid, such decision shall not affect the remainder of this amendment or the ordinance. Again, this is legal speak saying, I'm going to do what I want, if you find a reason to get me done, I'm going to keep doing it, I'm going to do 99%. We can't turn over the whole thing. What happened to Niagara Falls is open for business? Is Niagara Falls open for business? I see, I hear the words, I see differently. And that same thing, in any specific requirement for a permit under section 1319 or for a use permitted under 1319, is deemed unconstitutional or invalid, such decision shall not affect the remaining requirements for any required permit. So that's basically saying, something's going to, something's not right, but the rest is right. We're not going to tell you what's right until you spend your money on your lawyers. It says that again in C, just in different words. 5C, lead agency, city council. What does a city council have experience as lead agency on ordinances of this sort? It says John Spanbauer is the only name listed on any of this.
Council chairman, we at the one minute mark.
That's okay. So that's five. Number six, and number six is about decorum. You know, if I say mofo now, is mofo okay now? Can I say it after it gets voted on? We'll just leave that as a personal inside joke for y'all. But nowhere does it state, and I implore you guys to write this resolution a little bit better, nowhere does it state that if a cell phone goes off, we're going to throw everybody in jail. And then, lastly, for city council vote and procedures abstentions.
Thank you, Todd.
No more speakers.
There's no more speakers on agenda items? Okay, there's no more speakers on agenda items. We'll move on to the controllers' report.
All right, so, my head is not yet, just a quick update.
A couple items. The, our parking operations fund, and the tribal revenue update as well. Parking operations, so some positive news here. This is, uh, these figures are unaudited, subject to change based off of the end of the year close. And also, these numbers are through July 31st for all of the years shown here. So I have 2022, which is obviously the current year, 2021, last year, and then I figured it wasn't really worth looking at 2020, just due to the situation in that year. So I looked at 2019 prior to, prior to COVID. And I have it broken down into revenue that we've received from the parking meters, revenue collected at the parking ramp, the various city-owned lots that, that we have, the Niagara Street Lot, the Third Street Lot by the Jefferson, and then the parking agreements that we have with multiple entities downtown, hotels, businesses. And you can see definitely a positive result so far for 2022. The impacts of the new gate system that is installed at the ramp and the lots, we saw record revenue in July at the parking ramp in excess of a half million dollars in just July. And July alone brought in a little more than $925,000 between all of the meters, ramp, lots, and various parking agreements. So you can just look over year over year, our revenue, we've not only exceeded last year, but exceeded prior to, prior to COVID in, in 2019. The parking meter number is down. That is in part due to the Third Street Lot where the Jefferson Building is, used to have parking meters installed there. So those who paid, those who parked in that lot paid at the meter, and that revenue showed up in the meter section. Where now with the, the gate, it's under the parking lot section. So there is a little bit of just a location difference for, for where that revenue is being accounted for. But you can see all in all, we have increased compared to 2019. And then the other positive note too, is our expenses are also down compared to 2019. It is up compared to 2021. A majority of that is due to the, the fees, the credit card fees that we pay for transactions. So now that most of the revenue at the, at the lots and the ramp are credit card, those fees that we cover are, are paid. So you'll see increases in expenses related to bank fees, and obviously, it's based off of activity. So the more activity you have, the more expenses you'll have specific to, to those charges. But our, our labor costs are down there due to the installation of the gates, and overall expenses are down and revenues are up, and that's obviously a good sound, a good sign. There, there is a budget figure of about $1.9 million of anticipated net income for the year. We, August is the last significant revenue month for downtown. September, we do relatively well as well. But after I get the August numbers, which should hopefully be next week, it'll give a clearer picture for where we will likely end up. But it appears that we should be able to exceed budget from that net income perspective. And tribal revenue reserve update. So in, in August, we received, obviously prior to August, we received the full amount owed from 2017 through 2021. We also, in August, received the first quarter of 2022, getting us back on that quarterly payment plan. And the figure that we collected in 2022 for, for Q1, which is the January through March time period, was a little less than 2.6 million, which was more than the allocation from 2021. However, you know, down compared to 2020 and significantly down compared to 2019. Obviously, in 2020, there were normal operations there for January and February, and then March is when everything started to, to change. But, you know, we'll get a little maybe clearer picture for how things are going in terms of future payments and activity there, likely in the next quarter, in the quarter after. But at least we are seeing some improvements from 2021, and we'll continue to monitor this as these payments start, start to come in more often. And that's it.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions?
Dan, is the casino money kind of in line with your projections?
For the, the Q1?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, you know, we know that it wasn't good to go back to the close to $4 million a quarter type payment, you know, hoping that there are improvements from the Q1. The Q1 payment's typically the, the lowest one when you look at all four. But, you know, they, I would say maybe a little behind what I had thought, but not too far off.
Thank you, Dan.
For community happenings, there's two events I'd like to announce. Outside, there's a flyer for, on an event that Councilman Tompkins has been involved in many times. It's recognizing veterans, and, and I forgot to bring the sheet in with me. It's on September 24th.
At Niagara Falls High School.
At Niagara Falls High School from 12 to 4:00. And there's a handout, they're looking for volunteers, there's a contact number, and it's a great event. The second event that's happening this Saturday is an event that's sponsored by Healthier, collaboration with Healthier Niagara. They are doing a walk from the train station. They usually do it every year. I think there's this, this is their sixth consecutive year. It's a free event, you can line, you can register online, and information for that is also on their website. So those are two of the items I'd like to mention tonight about community happenings. Let's move on to reviewing agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, there is a walk on item. This is, it's proposed to be item number 19 on today's agenda. This is relative to the creation, establishment, development, construction, expansion, enlargement, and operation of commercial data centers in the city of Niagara Falls, extending the moratorium on the consideration and/or issuance of all permits and/or approvals through September 30, 2022. Currently, the moratorium runs through September 13th, 2022, which will be next week. You have an item on the agenda today to consider the amendment of the city zoning ordinance to create a high-energy overlay district for you today. And if that is put into place, this would allow members, members of the city staff and the attorneys to go through the, the terms of the, the proposed ordinance amendment and basically set up a framework going forward to implement the changes that are in that ordinance. So this is, again, proposed number 19, and this would need to be walked on, so we need to have a motion and a vote.
Before we move, has everyone, because we just, has everyone had a chance to read through it?
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion to move it back.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zayjack?
Yes.
Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
As it's approved, this will be added as number 19 on your agenda today. Thank you.
The review of the agenda items are as follows. Agenda item number one. Agenda item number two. Agenda item number three. Agenda item number four. Agenda item number five.
Yes, I want to speak on that. I'm basically going to re-peat what I spoke on yesterday. Excuse me. Given the disclaimer that my father lives on the 2400 block of Cutterback, I'm very, very interested in the quality of life of the residents in that area as well. I understand that. But I want to make sure that we're being fair. And for me, specifics that are in this ordinance, I would, I would like for us to maybe make some slight adjustments before actually putting this ordinance through. One of the big ones for me, especially being that the data centers are nestled in, pretty much in the, like, the industry zone, is that we kind of, as Mr. Spitzer yesterday actually suggested, I would kind of agree with him that we kind of create a fair decibel requirement once a noise study has been done. Because the surrounding plants make more noise than 40 decibels. I'm actually speaking louder than 40 decibels in this room right now. And for, and I know we talk about, you know, grandfathering in industries that have been here for a long time. However, nothing is permanent, and a lot of the industries that were here, they left. And I don't think that we should be making provisions for industries that we don't even know will be here in the next five years or so. When there are companies that are willing to come in and make an investment of tens of millions of dollars in brownfield lands that these industries that have left, left us with. You go down Buffalo Avenue, and it's garbage. So, when we, and if we're not going to, we haven't, I haven't seen any plans on anyone trying to fix up those lands that are, like, pretty much in our prime real estate area that has, what, a waterfront right behind it. So that was piss poor decision that happened way back when. It's affecting us now. Like one of the speakers said, I hope, we are open for business, and I'm hoping that we're not pushing businesses away. For me, 40 decibel, that's, that is, like I said yesterday, that's monastery quiet. That's a whisper. So, for me, at the bare minimum, I would hope that we could kind of readjust something like that, so we don't seem like we're being unfair to the businesses. And like I said, it seems to me cherry picking, because if this plant and this plant makes a lot of noise, and we're saying, but we expect this amount of noise out of you, I don't see that being fair at all. And I don't think that we should be making provisions for industries that we don't even know will be here in the next five years or so. When there are companies that are willing to come in and make an investment of tens of millions of dollars in brownfield lands that these industries that have left, left us with. You go down Buffalo Avenue, and it's garbage. So when we, and if we're not going to, we haven't, I haven't seen any plans on anyone trying to fix up those lands that are, like, pretty much in our prime real estate area that has, what, a waterfront right behind it. So that was piss-poor decision that happened way back when. It's affecting us now. Like one of the speakers said, I hope, we are open for business, and I'm hoping that we're not pushing businesses away. For me, 40 decibel, that's, that is, like I said yesterday, that's monastery quiet. That's a whisper. So for me, at the bare minimum, I would hope that we could kind of readjust something like that so we don't seem like we're being unfair to the businesses. And like I said, it seems to me cherry picking. Because if this plant and this plant makes a lot of noise, and we're saying, but we expect this amount of noise out of you, I don't see that being fair at all. So that's what I'm suggesting. Instead of putting it in as is, is maybe we can make a little tweak.
My only comment, I mean, at the public hearing yesterday, I think we covered a lot of the areas here. I'd like to thank the people from the industry that reached out to this council and wanted to give us their point of view from their operations. And I believe they do want to be good neighbors in this city. I'm going to be supporting the ordinance as it written. And Dante, I don't disagree with you. I think the sound level is something that might have to be tweaked. But I'd rather have a strict ordinance to start off and pull back than start off higher and we have to put more restrictions in. So that's my opinion on that. So, but I think we've worked hard on this ordinance. I appreciate the businesses out there that have given us their feedback.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say one thing, too, to piggyback off of that. And Dante, I do think you make some really good points there as well. And to some of the, you know, the owners of the cryptocurrency mining facilities who did invite us to visit, it was definitely, it was certainly educational. And so I have believed two things. Number one, public health and wellness is a priority here. We've heard that from so many residents who have spoken about the noise. And I've heard the noise, and I know many of us have heard the noise. And I also believe that these owners want to be responsible, and they want to know what is it that we need to do moving forward? Because I heard that from, from the, from the business owners. And the, and I was talking to some of my colleagues about this. In the industry itself, there's a Bitcoin magazine that also addresses and educates on the noise reduction technology that's out there. And there are many, many options. So I know it exists, and we've talked to some of the, you know, some of the cryptocurrency business owners about that. So I do believe there's peaceful ways for the business to coexist with our residents in our neighborhoods. And I think this ordinance addresses a lot of that.
I have number six.
Number six? Yes, number six. Relative to the decorum. So I went through this, and I was reading this, and especially with the new additions. I've, I've been talking about this for a while. And so what this does, I speak about the voice of the people a lot. And when the most of our council body supports special meetings that doesn't allow public input, when, and vote on agenda items that affect all of the community without any community input. I've said it before, it's over 100 items that has been voted on. When we cut our council meetings in half, I know I'm kind of sounding like a broken record, but we're here now. And the engaging, I call this our community engagement piece because we allow, we actually have a podium here. That podium is not there on our special meetings. It, it, it gives me empathy with my constituents. Because it allows me to understand why you're frustrated, why you're upset. Because you elected us, and you elected us for your voice not to be heard or for us to represent you. So, so I'm going to look at a couple of these, because of what's already in place. Like, number nine, we say that, you know, the council shall not respond to questions or statements during the meetings. But then a new, new portion of it, we talk about that the council members may interrupt any speaker and raise a point of order if we feel like they're disrupting the quorum. And there has been numerous occasions, all due respect, Chairman, where you have interrupted prematurely people who are at the podium on speaking on specific agenda items. And because you felt that they may have been off topic, and there were times where you were totally wrong, and then we had to give them their time back, right? Because maybe you didn't like what they were talking about. And that happens a lot. So for me, I feel like, what is, who governs that? When we're talking about who's going to say what's right or wrong, if somebody is off topic or whatnot? Should we have someone else chairing this meeting that's not, you know, biased or that's not one of us that could actually handle that portion of it? Because sometimes I feel like it could be a little bit biased when it comes down to that. Also, number two, on the enforcement rules. It says that the sergeant-at-arms, which will be the law officers, thank you for your service, sergeant-at-arms shall enforce the rules of the decorum and also doing so, may remove any person from the city council chamber and/or take any other appropriate action either upon the direction of the council chairperson or his own discretion as applicable. I need details of what that sounds like. Because what it sounds like to me, removal is one thing, but are we saying that we can arrest someone for wanting to have a voice? Because that's what it looks like, is, because taking them out, that's one thing. But adding extra, like, what is, what is any other appropriate? Because that's a very gray line. And I'm already, I feel some kind of way anyway about how we have been governing when it regards to the voice of the people and which will elect us to represent them. So I just want to kind of like just get a clearer understanding to that. And in that case, maybe that could be something that we could table and talk about later. I don't think that there's really, there's frustration. There's really frustration. There's a lot of people going through a lot of things in the city of Niagara Falls. And they feel like they're not being heard when they come up to that podium. And then we keep muzzling and clamping down. And it feels like once they're, we already cut the meeting in half, and then there was a protest on special meetings without their voice. And what we do, it's almost like the majority of the council is doubling down on this enforcement and not saying, okay, well, you know what? We really should listen to the voice of the people, especially when we're voting on agenda items that affect them.
So I'll respond.
Okay, absolutely.
Our response, so first of all, I was the initiator of this. And as you say, people are frustrated. People are frustrated the way these council meetings have been going, with the decorum that has been present at some of these council meetings. So you may see the decorum one way, I may see it another way, and other people may see it another way. The reason this came to be was of two news articles in our local paper because of the number of calls I received from people and other council people who speak about, I'm not coming to those meetings anymore. It's an embarrassment, the way people speak to you, the way people speak out, the way people during our discussions interrupt us. So everyone has a right to come up here and speak. And this has nothing to do with special meetings. This has nothing to do with, with any other thing except when people come up here to speak, speak with respect, speak with dignity, have the decorum that we expect. People shouldn't be yelling out when we're having discussions about a topic. How many times have I had to pound the hammer, say, please, we're having a discussion? Okay, that's the decorum I'm talking about, Councilman. It's not to limit anyone from speaking, it's not to limit their rights. Now, you brought up the fact about, first of all, it's my responsibility as the council chair, and, and I've had a difficult time doing it to keep order in this, in this, in this room sometimes. So this, which I initiated, helps me keep order and hopefully will help our speakers understand what we have in place. Now, the point of order we talk about, that another councilman can say, sometimes I've been looking at the speaker and someone's yelling out from another spot that I've never even noticed. So I need assistance in keeping order in this chamber. That if you see something that's out of order, or it's disrespectful, and it's not appropriate in this chamber, you help out and say, I want to call a point of order. Councilman, I like to bring your attention to the person over here just threw you the finger, which is inappropriate, okay? Then we make a decision. You know, you talk about an arrest. Do I, we've been on this council for, you've been on it for seven years. Have you ever seen an arrest?
If you have.
Okay, I'll let you explain that. Again, again, it's explaining to people. So if we ask the speaker, who's been really disrespectful, to someone in the audience or to one of us, say, okay, you have to be removed from the podium, our officer goes up, removes him, and they refuse to be removed, that officer has a right and a decision, not me, to arrest a person. That officer will have the right and decision. And what it does, it provides the officers that are serving this community and serving this chamber a little more guidance on what their role is. So that's the reason for those things. So I fully support this. It's not to, to, to have anyone be quiet. Alls we're trying to do is bring a better decorum to this council. And I can tell you, this is not something that is, is only going on in this chamber. And I'll refer to two articles I read. Well, they were both in the Gazette, but I had another sheet here. In Minnesota, city council struggles to maintain control of their chamber. Protesters and others have been heckling, interrupting, and derailing meetings. An op-ed in the city council in California talks about the, the city council was losing control of the meetings, and they had to start putting more rules in to control. So if you read this, it talks about this trend with government meetings and how people are becoming uncivil in them. Okay, we, this is not an ordinance for 99% of the people to come to speak. But that 1% that is disrespectful, that uses profanity, that, that creates issues when we're having a discussion, that is what this ordinance is for. Okay, so let's go around, and then you'll be able to counter it.
Yeah, go ahead.
If anyone wants to speak on it.
I go back to Dante's, speak on special meetings and people not being able to hear their voice. I disagree with you. They may not be able to speak at the meeting, but there's a meeting beforehand. There is emails, the agenda comes out day before, there's phones, there's ways to get a hold and make your point across. But there's always been a meeting in the last four or five special meetings that there's been people here beforehand, council members sitting here, to answer any question on the agenda. Again, we all have phone numbers listed, we all have emails listed. There's ways to get a hold and get your point across on the agenda. So it's not that the people's voices aren't heard, they just can't be heard at the special meeting. But they can be heard before the meeting.
Councilman Tompkins, I want to make sure we keep, this is not about special meetings. This is about decorum at our city council meetings here and how people are coming up and speaking and acting, so.
No, the reason why I brought up special meetings is because it, it deals with the level of frustration. But to, to your, but I mean, because I don't want to forget, because I feel like.
Well, here's what we're going to do. According to Robert's rules.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Then you can counter.
Let me just.
I mean, just briefly, like Chairperson Spanbauer said, this isn't anything unique to Niagara Falls. If you go back on the OSC YouTube channel, even say a year ago, you can definitely see a shift on the decorum of the chamber. Again, it's not every speaker, it's not the same speakers all the time. But there's definitely a shift. And I think this is basically just trying to get the decorum back in line with what you should expect as residents.
What we should expect is elected officials. And, you know, I think rules are put in place for a purpose, and I think these rules should get us back on track.
Perfectly stated. And, you know, at first, when this, when we were discussing this and this came out, and we were, you know, talking to some other council members in other areas, I was actually, you know, surprised at how many other municipalities were also, you know, going through the same thing. And I think we do owe it to the residents to give them the, the respect and give them what, from here and from out there, that they deserve up there at the podium. And this helps us all to be able to provide that, so.
So, thank you. To your point, one, I'm not oblivious to order. I, I am in agreeance that I hope that we could have more stability when it comes down to, you know, we don't want disrespect. I'm, I, we shouldn't disrespect them, and they shouldn't disrespect us. I get all of that, so I'm not going against that. But when I'm speaking on, like, even when you talk about, you know, the meeting, the half-hour meeting or so, 45 minutes or whatever prior to, my thing is, is that's a meeting that's not on record. So we could tell you anything those 45 minutes. You can ask me anything, and I can tell you anything. Let's, I mean, hear me out. So that's why I feel that it is important, it should be a part of. And we've had more special meetings this year than some administrations have had in their whole term.
Again, Councilman Miles.
But we're not going to talk about the special meetings, okay?
Yeah, actually, let's keep to this.
Okay, so here's where, here's, I'm going to read this really quick. The head of local good government group thinks that Niagara Falls lawmakers can and should do more to give residents more of a voice during council meetings. Paul Wolf, president of the New York Coalition of Open Government, encouraged council members to amend the city charter to make possible for residents to be heard during any council meeting, whether they are scheduled or called by the mayor. The city needs to stand up for the public instead. Now, this is, I'm reading this because this is Niagara Gazette as well, because I know you mentioned.
Right.
Articles in the Niagara Gazette. City needs to stand up for the public and stand up to the mayor by amending the city charter, Wolf said. Holding a community forum prior to the meeting is simply not an acceptable solution to the mayor's refusal to give the public an opportunity to speak. The mayor is bruising his power, and the city council needs to act on behalf of the public to put a stop to it. Restino last week called for another special meeting. And adding to a series that dates back to January, this week's special meeting will be held at 5:30 PM today inside of the city council chambers. As a special meeting, no public comments will be allowed during the session. Council Chairman Spanbauer announced over the weekend that Councilwoman Tracy Banks will host a community forum prior to the special meeting Restino has set up for the 5:30 today. Individuals who cannot attend this community forum can send comments to your email address. So, and it goes on to talk about how there was a, you know, the community stood out front, and they pretty much, you know, expressed how they felt, right? About these type of situations. And this was in our paper. So I'm, it's, I, I think it's, it's a mixture.
So, Council, in all due respect, though, again, you're bringing up a different topic than.
But it still, it still ties into the fact that.
This resolution, so.
It still ties into the fact that we're talking about a resolution that's talking about why people are getting upset and people are possibly.
Come and speak.
Right, right.
They're going to be able to speak all they want at a council meeting right here. You know?
I'm just giving you, I'm just giving you for, for number five, I mean, for number six, that's what, that where we're on? For the decorum, all I'm saying is, is that we have not been perfect up here. Like I said, you have interrupted numerous people, like, very prematurely, and then they had to say, hey, I wasn't even finished, I was getting to this point. And then you had to go back.
Dante.
Yeah, so it's still, I just want to make sure.
I've, I've done that.
You don't agree?
No, I said I agree with you. I've made mistakes, I'll admit it.
So, so let's. Let's make sure that we don't just push the blame on the people and make it seem like they're the problem when we can be part of the problem as well.
This is running for people who are a problem.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what this is running for. And I'll make a final statement on this, and then we'll close. Please remember, you know, we have business people. In fact, we have some in the audience now that have not witnessed what we have witnessed in the decorum. Imagine a business person coming here that wants to start a business in Niagara Falls and has seen some of the actions that we've allowed happen in this chamber. It does not look good for the city of Niagara Falls. And, and I think this, this resolution is just something, it's fair. It gives people an understanding of what our expectations are. And, and if it passes, I'm hoping everyone on this council helps, helps me as a chairman enforce the rules of decorum that we have presented in this resolution.
Just one more.
Go.
Because to be fair, because we're talking about the fact that, like, you know, when people attack, right? Towards the beginning of the year, there was someone that stood at that podium and directly came at me for a good three minutes. directly came at me for a good three minutes. And none of you said nothing. Nothing. And guess what I did? I took it, because that's what I signed up for that. Sometimes people are gonna say some stuff that you don't like. And guess what? It's okay. We should man up and just be okay to take it, because at the end of the day, we have to still do our job. Now, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that disrespect is tolerated. I don't tolerate that period. But just to say all of that, to say is, is that let's not make it, make it okay when it's me, because no one said nothing. So that's why, that's why I'm speaking on this.
I'm sorry if you felt like.
No, it's not that I felt it. We can go back to the video that was there. But we can move on, we'll move forward. Thank you.
You called the one I tired?
Yeah, oh, hey.
I have number seven.
Yes, number seven. Oh, yeah. Number seven, abstaining. So I'm gonna just bring everybody up to power to what's, why this is even on the agenda. Now, now I can talk about the special meeting. Um, yeah. Because I, in the beginning, once the special meeting started, I actually went to the first meeting, right? And I asked the mayor who sat there, I asked him what warranted a special meeting from these items, because the items that I read at that time had no time sensitivity, it had no urgency for a special meeting, and he kind of just gave me a bland answer. And at that point, I began to boycott the special meetings. I began to not come because I said, one, not only are these last minute seventy-two hour notice special meetings are not time sensitive and doesn't require, you know, it, it doesn't have a sense of urgency, but you're not allowing public input from agenda items that we're speaking on that's affecting the public, but they can't tell me how it affects them. How can I make a conscious decision on how I'm gonna vote when, on things that may not affect me the same way? So I stopped, I stopped coming. And you know what? I had got some backlash from whether it's social media and all of that other good stuff, like, hey, you should, matter of fact, one of the meetings, you screamed up here, you said, you need to come to our special meetings. And I said, okay.
I said you had to.
Well, no, you said, you should come to the special meetings. She said, you said, I should come to the special meetings. That's when it got really, really wild up here. And I said, you know what? I'm gonna change, I'm gonna change my process. I had to really sit with myself, and I said, you know what? How can I represent the people if I don't come and really get the answers that I need from a lot of the questions from all of these special meeting agenda items, right? So I came to the last special meeting that I came to, and there were thirty-five items. Most of them were not time sensitive. Got professionals to look at and make sure that I wasn't tripping. Most of them were not time sensitive. And I questioned our mayor, council, county council, and some of our colleagues as well concerning some of these items. And at the end, after I've questioned and I got all of the questions out of the way, I chose to abstain from voting because yet and still, that podium was not there. I still stand on my principles that the people in power should not outweigh the power of people. People should be able to come. When I'm voting on something that affects the whole community, they should be able to come to that podium and address me. So because that's not the case, I chose to abstain from voting. Now, I'm okay with the, the, uh, the idea of, uh, giving a reason of why I'm abstaining. All that's gonna do is probably stretch the meeting about an extra half an hour, but I'm okay with it. But let me give you guys some information as it pertains to you guys saying that if I abstain, that it is not to be recorded in our, um, voting, right? First of all, none of us have to be compelled to vote. One, by you restricting my voting capacity, because that's what that's doing, that would require a what? A mandatory referendum. That's why it kind of makes me feel some kind of way, that wow, they're talking about doing this, because one, this is gonna have something to do with the charter, right? Because you're gonna have to change the way the meeting is done, right? So that's a mandatory referendum. The funny thing is, is that when I actually brought something to the table to bring the people's voice back into City Hall, two things, to have our meetings back to its regular, every other week meeting, and to add, add public speaking to special meetings, the first thing that came out of most of y'all mouth is that, oh, this might be a referendum, it's gonna cost the taxpayers money. Do you understand that if you try to do what you're trying to do tonight, that's gonna guarantee cost taxpayers some money? Next, none of you have the authority to supersede an estate regulated, supersede the reflection of my abstinent vote. I don't know if, I don't, I, I would, I, I don't know if you had talked to our attorney here, but that's a state law. Municipal Home Rule Authority, Section 106 of the Public Officer Law. At the end of the day, you, you don't want to cross, because at the, I'm gonna take it all the way, because I'm not that, at the end of the day, I don't back down. But if you want me to give you an explanation every time I vote, abstain to a vote at a special meeting, because guess what? I'm gonna be at every last one of those special meetings, as you, as you ask. And I'm gonna be there, and I'm gonna question every agenda item as I should. But guess what? At the end, until you put a podium there, you won't get a yes or no vote from me, because at the end of the day, statewide, it's regulated that you're gonna have to recognize all votes. That's a yes vote, that's a no vote, that's a recuse vote, and that's what? An abstinent vote. That's gonna be me until I see a podium there. So at the end of the day, you might wanna kind of do your homework on that before you put this through, because I'm gonna take it all the way to the end. God bless you.
Well, I'm glad.
On that one.
I'm glad you finally did homework, Councilman.
Oh, hey, that's cool. That's, that's cool.
That's cool.
That was great.
Hey, I don't.
Chris, can you give us any clarification here?
Absolutely. I mean, with, with regard to what Councilman Miles is saying about the public officers law, essentially what you're asking here, what you're trying to do is, his vote is an abstention. It's an abstention, and you're just not counting it in the official record. I mean, now we count it as A, as an abstention. It's not really counted on the vote tally as a yes or no vote in any event. But essentially, you're just not counting it because it's an abstention. But it's not a real vote that has an effect on either, any of the items that are coming before it. He's present at the meeting, but he's not actually voting for or against an item. I mean, so essentially, it doesn't change any of the voting that the council does with regard to any of the matters before it.
So from a, from that perspective, are you telling me that they can supersede the reflection of my abstinent vote?
What do you mean by the reflection?
The reflection, so when it comes down to the vote tally, what, are you gonna just act like I wasn't here? Or are you gonna say, it's gonna say A, right?
I think what they're saying, what, what, the way that it's written is that you're gonna indicate that you're abstaining, and that you're gonna indicate what your reasons are for abstaining.
Right.
Right.
No, that's the reason.
That is in, that is in the official record of the council, but as it relates to the vote itself, it's not a vote because you abstained from the vote.
However, two, provided that the council member abstained from voting on the agenda action item before the city council, the abstention should not be included in the city council's official vote tally.
That's correct, because you didn't, yeah, you didn't, you're not voting.
Okay, so, so it won't be, so it won't be recorded, and you're saying that's okay? I just want to make sure.
It's not, yeah, you're not, again, you're not voting for or against anything.
But it's a, but it's an.
You've indicated what you're, you indicated your abstention, you're indicating the reasons for the abstention. And then when the actual vote is being done, it's not a vote for or against the item, it's a like.
But it's abstained.
It's abstained.
And would it, and would it be listed as an abstain?
I mean, if you're looking at it right now, the votes you've done in the past, it would indicate that there's three, there's three votes or four votes for something, no votes against it, and you're abstention. Your abstention is still listed in the record as because, again, you're indicating you are abstaining, and you're indicating the reasons for the abstention. It's just not classified as a vote related to that particular item.
So I guess the question is, is, why, are you saying that after this, if I voted, if I, no, if I abstained from voting, that I could, it, it won't be listed, period?
If you voted, again.
If they vote this through, if they vote this tonight.
If you, the items that you voted for in the past, if it was, if it, if there are four votes for it and you abstained, it's essentially a four zero vote.
Right.
With an abstention. That's essentially what you're doing. You're voting again, it, it's, it's not a vote for or against.
I'm, I'm, I'm definitely not saying that.
Essentially, it's, in, in a way, it's just kind of reiterating what's already been happening here with this.
Right, but I'm, I'm, I'm getting, I wanna be detailed with this.
But they're gonna ask.
I don't wanna have a generalized.
As it relates to your, when it comes time to vote, you, you're going through, it's council member backs votes, then you vote. Council member backs might vote for or against it, you indicate you abstain. You abstain for the reason, whatever the reason may be. And then the votes continue, and at the ultimate vote, the ultimate tally sheet would indicate if there's four votes for, or three votes for it, and one vote against for it, and then essentially, that's what it is, with, because the one member abstained. So there's no vote for you because you didn't vote for or against the item.
But listed statewide, this is a statewide regulation, and you sure, you know, you know, it's a state right that whether it's being recu, like recusing myself.
In the official minutes of the, in the official minutes of the meeting, you are going to indicate that you're abstaining from the vote and what your reasons are.
Right. So when I abstain, when the, the total, um, vote tally comes up, it's gonna say that I abstain, right? If, because that's what I'm not reading here. On here is telling me, I'm okay with the first part, so you don't have to keep telling me about, like, I'm, I'm gonna tell the reason of why I vote.
There's an abstention.
Excuse me, sir, I'm just, I just want you to get a clear understanding. You don't, I, I understand, I can, I can tell the rea, I have no problem at all expressing why I'm abstaining on a vote. I'm talking about part two of this two section portion, is that, are you going to tell me that after I abstain, because I'm here, I'm present, I make the decorum, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm, 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 right? Are you telling me that once I abstain, if this gets voted through, you're telling me that I, my abstinent, abstinent vote won't be tallied on the vote tally?
Because you abstained from it, yes. I mean, that's essentially what happens now, Councilman.
No, 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 because if you look at the last tally, the last tally, what is the last meeting, it shows my, my name, and it shows abstain, so that's what you're changing.
Councilman, can I just clear, I think I know.
Okay.
So I think what we're looking at, so when we look at the minutes, let's just say, Councilman Miles abstains from this, you know, I think he's for this, but let's just say he abstains from it.
I'm okay with the first part, the second part is not happening.
His, his name will not be in the minutes of the vote.
It will say that the minutes, the minutes of the meeting will indicate that he is abstaining from the vote.
Okay.
So it'll be on record.
It'll indicate the reasons that he's abstaining from the vote.
And it'll be on record, is what I'm trying to say.
And that's on record, and it's, it's on record in the council minutes.
Okay, so as long as.
But when, but when it comes down at the end.
Will say three to one.
So the difference is, but, but you're changing that, though, right? Because.
No, it says the vote tally will say three to one, four to zero, the A doesn't count in the vote tally because you didn't vote.
But at, at the end of the day, I'm just.
A doesn't really count in the tally in any, in any event. I mean, that's, that's essentially what you.
I mean, but it, it expresses exactly what I did, and, and it doesn't make me look like I was just absent, because I'm coming here and I'm gonna ask these questions.
But it's not in the vote tally because you didn't vote.
That's after this, because it wasn't a vote tally.
No, even before this. You've never been in the vote tally.
I've never been in the tally?
No, because there's five people here, all right? Four people are saying yes or no, one is saying nothing, I'm not gonna vote on it. I decided not to cast the vote that the people elected me to do. They're saying that's what they're saying.
Wait, nah, you're painting, hold on, wait, you're painting a picture right now.
That's what they're saying, but no, but, but A.
And you're reaching.
You abstain, and the A is in the record because you spoke, and you're in the record, but in the vote tally, it's either a yes vote or a no vote. That's what counts in the tally.
Okay, so if I go to the, because I don't have that kind of time to do right now, if I go to the record, to the vote tally, my name is not gonna be there with the A next to it?
No, because it's a yes or no vote, it's four A's, four N's.
And then.
There's no A. It's only Canada.
Okay.
So here's what I'd like to do, Councilman Miles, I think you spoke, can we go around and each person, if they wanna make.
I know the circle of rebuttal, I get it.
Well, everyone should have an opportunity to speak.
I know, I, 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 but I get it.
You've had your opportunity.
I, I get it.
I know you wanna hear people speak, so let's make sure people speak.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing everybody speak. Go ahead.
I actually don't have a rebuttal to, to Councilman Miles, but I do see this from, this impacts me, and I was interested in this, because I know that there will be, you know, some things that I will have to abstain from. And I think this puts some clarity around people in position like me and future council members who have a spouse or a partner employed by the city to know when, what topics, what points of topics are appropriate to vote on, and which point of topics are appropriate to abstain from, and be able to explain that to constituents. So I was interested in it from that perspective, which was, I think it was either the last meeting or maybe the meeting before, Councilman Miles, I think you actually paused the meeting to ask about that, and I thought that was a valid point. So I had an interest in this from a different point of view.
But that's not abstaining, that's recusing. Like if I, if my fiance was a firefighter.
Yes, I would not be counted in the vote tally, I would not be voting on certain comments.
But you wouldn't abstain, you would be recusing.
It's, it's.
You abstained for a personal cause.
Yes.
Okay, so what, what is recusing?
Recusing means you don't wanna actually be part of any of the debate or anything with regard to that particular issue.
So recuse, like recusing yourself of, like if I'm here and like it's a conflict of interest, right? Because I just actually got, I made sure that I had my information. Conflict of interest, that means I recuse myself because it has a personal conflict between my.
And you shouldn't have any type of input in the debate of a member. You're basically taking yourself out of the discussion with regard to that particular issue.
So that's exactly what I was saying, it's the difference between abstaining and recusing yourself.
You can be involved with the discussion.
Okay.
But you're just choosing, for whatever reasons, to not cast a vote.
Right. No, that's, that's, that's all I know, I just wanted to kind of clarify and make the difference.
You know, and my comment on this is, you know, abstention from voting should be used in appropriate situations. I don't think abstaining from voting on thirty-two items to prove a political point is the appropriate use of the abstention vote. I do believe, as it's written, if you have a conflict of interest, if you have some, some other issues that, that, that may have an impact on you voting for something, family members, I think that's when the abstention vote should be used. So, and, and that's my, I, I think you come into a special meeting, and you have a right to do it, Councilman Miles, and abstaining from thirty-five agenda items makes this council look a little like a circus. And there's ways of proving your point, and what I look at is, we've had support for firefighters here, support for police officers, support for everything, and you've abstained from those votes, what that shows me, you're not supporting the agenda items that are in place for that, for that vote. So you could do what you want. I feel that the abstention is being abused by you versus being used in the right situation, and that's why I'll be supporting this resolution. Let's go around and you can.
My view on abstention is different than some other people's view on abstention. I like the idea of having the statewide abstain test, you know?
Mr. Mason, just to cut off my other point, this would not be a voter referendum, correct?
I don't.
To change the charter.
It doesn't, it doesn't, again, it's not really changing a lot of what you're already having placed.
Okay.
And I think it needs to be clarified, we're, we're not saying any council member can't abstain, what we're really saying in the resolution, if you're gonna abstain, say the reason for your abstain, now, you're gonna have a reason, I, I understand. And, and it should be related to the agenda item, not a political statement, and that'll be my statement on that.
So here's the issue, cause right, right now, you're, you're painting a picture and you're painting a narrative. Um, because what I can't say, and, oh, that was another thing, cause I definitely, um, there was a part on this action, we were talking, it was saying that, I, that's how I knew that you were, you were heavy with this. Um, it says, "An abstent- abstention alone without legitimate justification of authority is a disservice to the citizens and the visitors of our city." Now, we both have definitely different views on that because we're talking about a disservice to the community. I could even do a show of hands and I promise you I'll get the majority. Me abstaining on voting on items because I don't get any public input from my constituents, our constituents, not mine, our constituents. Me abstaining on voting because I, this, this body of gov- this governing body is not allowing people to speak. Me abstaining to do that so I can try to get the people's voice back into this, into this room? Versus me, um, you know, i- i- is that, is that me, a, a disservice? Or is it a service for us not to allow the people to actually speak? What's the, like, what's a bigger disservice? Me trying to stand up for the voice of the people? And guess what? Facing all odds from all four of you, and the mayor, and his administration? Or you guys not letting the people speak at all at the meeting, and then you have thirty-five, no, don't, uh, please listen to get an understanding of what I'm saying and don't just hear me to give it, cause you're jumping. Or to have people, to not allow the voice of the people to come and give me how this is going to affect you? The people that decide to come here, people that take their time out of their schedule to come here, and not allow them to actually speak. So I'm going to vote, and guess what? If I vote, and I really don't have the knowledge, I did this before, y'all remember, when I was saying, we, uh, we, we live in our own area, we live in our own tunnel, we only see what we see, we deal with who we deal with. You don't, none of us are, have the expertise of, or we, we're, we're not all-knowing. We don't, we don't, we're not, um, we don't have all of the answers. But these, there are people who hired us, and when they want to come to the table, you have thirty-five items? I don't feel comfortable voting on items that affect other people, cause guess what happens? Two years down the line, when it affects, when that effect start taking place, when that effect starts taking place, then what they gonna do? They gonna go back to this vote tally? And they gonna say, oh yeah, Dante voted yes for that. And then guess who, I guess gotta be held accountable to that, Dante. So that's all I'm saying. I'm saying, and I, I don't think I'm talking any other language but English. I feel like I'm, I'm, I'm not, it's not, like, I'm, I'm not being irrational. All I'm saying is, is why is it that, and that's another question that I also have, is why aren't we talking about a re-? Oh, and the reason why I talk about the, the, the mandatory referendum is just how you guys, um, supported or kind of defended the mayor and said that he might sue the city if we have to go back in, if we choose to go back into the, um, charter? When, if you, you gotta remember, I'm still an elected official, we're equals, alright? So by restricting my voting capacity, I am not to be compelled to vote, period. I don't have to. And you can paint it any kind of way that you want, but at the end of the day, my thing is, and I told you this, I said I will vote the minute that podium comes back up in those meetings. I think that makes sense, so if you give me rebuttal, it's gonna be the same.
What I'd like to do is, I think we've carried this debate, I'd like to make a motion to, to, um, have one last, a one-minute summary of what, if there's anything else you want to say and make a motion to move on.
I think I said everything I need to say, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, you're good.
I'm good. I said everything I need to say.
Item number eight.
Item number eight. Trees, now, I think all of us in here know, good and well, while we were campaigning, mostly everybody, there are community members in the city of Niagara Falls that has been on a tree list for the last ten, twelve, thirteen years. To get trees removed, ash trees, right? I'm not for, I'm not against planting trees, however, before we start planting trees, um, I give a prime example. About a year and a half ago, my dad called about a tree that's tearing up the sidewalk and kids can't even skateboard or halfway walk on that property. And people have came and looked at it and nothing has been done, the tree is still there. And that's not just my dad, that's just a lot of people in the city of Niagara Falls that's been on this tree list. It's a real tree list. And so, and my thing is, is if we're gonna use forestry to plant trees, why don't we make sure that they cut some of these trees? Because it's still a quality of life issue when it comes down to these trees. Um, and I need to know the detail of how are we gonna pick and choose where these, who tree get cut first and how it's gonna get planted? Because, uh, some trees got cut down that were just kind of like, uh, uh, got, they got reported, and then it's about who you know a lot of times in this, in this place. If you know the right person, you will get, you will get what you want. So, uh, it's okay. And so, so for me, instead of doing, instead of, so I guess my whole point to make a long story less long, is before we start walking around and trying to get, use the same forestry that we need to cut a lot of these trees down, let's make sure that we start taking care of the actual problem.
Council Miles, do you know how many people are in our forestry department? Do you know a number?
It's probably about three or four, it's small, it's very small.
So it's very small?
Right.
So what I would recommend, when the budget time comes, when the budget time comes, you put three or four more, double that staff, and then when the taxes go up to the residents, okay, that you support having more forestry, cause they are doing the best they can with the people they have. Our forestry department, I'll refer to Councilman Tompkins, cause I know he knows a little more about than I do. They are a very poor operation, okay? And you can see they're planting trees, and the only time they could plant the trees is during overtime. And anyone who knows them in the municipality or anything, we are taking out hundreds and hundreds of ash trees. In order to make the city thrive again with trees, you have to replant trees. It's just a, a replant thing, so our forestry department is going to be busy. And, and to criticize our forestry department, and also, here's what I would recommend. I would also recommend, and you say, well, who's on the list? Have you talked to our administration to see who's on the list?
I, 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 I have the list, it's like, it's, it's a bible.
Right, it's, so my, my comment on this is they're doing the best they can, and I don't disagree, should we?
I don't, I, I think you heard me though.
I think we can do, we, we want to get trees down, but we just don't have the staff to fulfill the needs.
No, hold on, hold on.
Give me one second.
Yeah.
We've always had a nursery, they call it nursery, they're planted over by the ice rink, there's a little spot where they plant trees. When they take down a whole block like they did on Pierce Avenue with help of National Grid and stuff like that, they try and throw up three or four trees here and there. They don't buy a lot of trees, what's on there, fifty trees, something like that?
What's on here? Oh, it's a hundred and thirteen, I think, trees that we're trying to buy and plant.
When we got a Greenway grant to take a bunch out in the parks and stuff like that, that's all this is, is trying, you have to bring trees back for nutrition, for wildlife, but we've been taking down a lot. National Grid has been helping us with a lot. When you see a tree that's like trunk at twenty feet, National Grid came through, when they trim for the wires, they're taking the whole top of the tree down for us. So we're just trying to catch back up and put it, we have always had what they call a nursery. These trees are smaller trees that are planted over by the ice rink, and then as trees get taken down or storm, and a lot of residents want their tree back, but we don't normally take a tree down somewhere and put the same tree back. That usually comes two or three years later. So a lot of people have been waiting for trees that have gotten down, that have been waiting for years to get trees. We can only do so many, we can only plant trees, I believe it's fall and early spring, otherwise they don't take.
I think the thing that I'm, cause I think you misunderstood what I was trying to say. At the end of the day, I'm not saying, let me give you a prime example. So if I was one of the earlier ones, five, ten years ago, that was on this tree list, how is my morale gonna feel when another tree has been not only removed, but a new one has been erected? So the thing is, is that I ask, what is this, what is the system? Because is it an equitable system, is it fair?
That's the question, you gotta ask the administration.
But, but two, but two, but here's number two. I don't think the lack of trees is a problem in the city of Niagara Falls as much as the ash trees that are tearing up people's property and falling on people's home, because if it hasn't fell, fallen on your home, you wouldn't really understand. If it's not in your yard ripping up your sidewalk, you wouldn't understand. So there's a, there's much apathy and not as much empathy in regards to that, and we all heard it. I think that's the thing about it, and that's why I'm talking about it, and I'm able to say it really freely, because I promise you, with all of us, we've all been throughout the whole city marching with palm cards and shaking hands and noticed that most of the people was talking about the trees, right? So I, and hardly any people, matter of fact, not one, I, this is my, that was my second time I got in this duo around. But both campaigns of mine, not one person came to me and said, you know what? I need more trees in front of my house. Not one. And I'm, I'm prob- and I, unless we live in a different life, probably didn't happen to you guys either.
Council members.
But at the end of the day, I'll, I, you know.
And again, I'll say it again, if you think we need to bet more.
No, no, I'm not saying more, no, no, I'm not.
More staff, I mean, when the budget time comes, make a recommendation.
So I'll just stop, I'll, I'll just, I'll end it here.
That's how we can do a better job of removing trees, more staff.
It's facetiousness and the condescending tone, I don't have to deal with it, so we can move forward.
It's not dealing with it.
No, it's, it's condescending, that's fair, that's condescending. That's condescending.
Council members, just, just to. Just to clarify, I mean, with, with this particular item, it's, it was pursuant to a grant, so grants, ash trees that are removed, part of the grant requires that those ash trees are replaced with, uh, a number of trees, and that's why pursuant to the grant that we received to remove trees, part of it is that we all has, also have to, uh, replace trees.
So Mr. Mazer, so are we at the, did we reach the capacity of all of the trees with the grant that we can remove?
Uh, that I don't know.
Yes.
Okay, so then maybe there's something.
This is a, this is a grant that myself and Councilman Kennedy wrote, it was a Greenway grant.
This, this, uh, this expenditure will basically eliminate, I think there needs just a couple thousand dollars left in the grant specific to this program. So what, if this gets approved, essentially, uh, the total grant award will be, will be utilized.
Okay, uh, uh, this, the question that I'm asking is, is that once, far as the monies is concerned or whatever, the Greenway funding, is that, are we going, are we, for however many trees that we need to plant versus how many trees we need to cut down? Have we cut down all of the trees that we need to cut down, far as all of the monies that's allotted to that?
Yeah, that got taken care of last year, I believe it was finished.
So we don't, so there's no more funding for tree, trees?
Not on this particular grant.
Specific to this grant, yes.
Right, uh, um, is there a way that we can, is, is that on, um, I can get that information? Can you, can you give me that information, sir? As far as the funding and, and, like, in more detail? The stuff that you guys are telling me, I'm quite sure has to be written down.
So, so the, the number of trees taken down, number of trees planted, the utilization of the grant?
Yeah, utilization of the grant, and how much we have used already far as the tree removal versus how many we need to plant.
Yeah, we can, I can give you basically what we've expended from, uh, the specific capital code over, uh.
Thank you very much.
And when you send that, can you send that to all of us? Thank you.
Item number nine. Item number ten. Item number eleven. Item number twelve. Item number thirteen. Item number fourteen. Item number fifteen. Item number sixteen. Item number seventeen. Item number eighteen. Item number nineteen.
Number nineteen. Um, so this, this is to extend the moratorium, right? Just, just a question.
It's an extension through the thirtieth this month, so the end of this month.
Okay, um, are we guaranteeing, because I know the biggest problem has been the noise, right? And from, you know, the connection that I've had, that we, we were actually able to attend at the Bitcoin Mining Center, they've been ready to build the wall since yesterday, right? So my thing is, is this, a moratorium stops them from building that wall for the time being, right? Yet, you know, we're, we're, we're extending, because what happens is the people, the quality of life is not gonna change for another fifteen days, and then it's like, I don't know, how much more extension are we gonna have? And people, I hate to think that we're putting a moratorium in place to prove some type of point because people are still dealing with that quality of life issue. So why don't we lift it enough so they can actually fix the problem? Because we already know what the biggest problem is, I don't think we would be here, I'm hoping that it's not some type of, cause we're talking about political agenda, I'm hoping it's not another political agenda from, from something exterior. But at the end of the day, if they can fix the problem, the quality of life problem, this noise that everybody is com-? I've been there, again, my dad lives on the twenty-fourth block of, uh, twenty-four hundred block of Cutterback Avenue. He here, is, is, is his problem as well too. But if they're willing to fix it, why don't we open it up for these people to fix it? Instead of continuously put another moratorium down so people can complain for another fifteen days or twenty days?
If they were good players, they could have fixed it before the moratorium too.
But at the end of the.
Complaints were there is why the moratorium got put on.
I think, I, but I, but if they're ready to fix it now?
Why didn't they do it then?
Okay, but we can't, could've, should've, would've, if it's, if it can be done today.
Another two weeks won't kill them.
Okay, but then, but then, at the end of the day, we, we can't, so then you don't care about the complaints of other people, because they're gonna continue to complain, it's still gonna be a problem.
And you, you really think that in two weeks they're gonna build a wall?
There's never no.
Yeah, it's true. I quite questioned back in seventeen, is this, uh, do we possibly have this property being gotten rid of?
That's the, uh, that's the hope, uh, we're gonna go in there and do some work to remediate some of the, the condition of the property with the hopes that they're actually gonna buy this property and put it back into something positive.
And they go in there, we're not liable of any way, shape, or form, we're not liable, they'll have their insurance.
I mean, it's an agreement, and they're gonna be required to have insurance and things.
Beautiful, so boy, that, that'd be a blessing there.
Hey, if you're not sure what they're talking, and we're talking about the property of Junior's Restaurant on fifty-six, um, and Pine, we might have someone take the operations of that over, so, um, but back to this amendment, I, I just, um, the walk on, I think it says it, whereas the city staff tasked with the administration enforcement of the new overlay district will be required to develop a clear, concise, and consistent framework to execute the terms of the zoning amendment. Um, this is new also to our staff, and, and, and speaking to the administration, one of the things we want to do with, with the industries that are involved with the overlay district ordinance is, we want to have a red carpet available for them. We want to have everything in place so they, it's a one-stop shop, and we don't have that right now. So, um, to push it back two weeks, a little more than two weeks, I'm okay with that. And, and Council Miles, you're right, the residence, it's gonna be a little delay, um, and, and I think in the end, this, this is good for everyone involved.
I hope we let the residents know, we express it to them, that there is something, like, there's, is, we're trying to create progress because I don't want it to make it seem like, yeah, these are bad players and all this other stuff, and nobody is actually trying to do anything, you know what I mean? Instead of saying, hey, we want to make it better for them or whatever the case is. So from our end, say, hey, can you guys just hold out for another two weeks? Instead of trying to point the finger and make it seem like these other centers are doing, are, are just horrible people. I hope that that's the, that's the, 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 the message that we're putting out to the constituents instead of trying to make them think that this is such a bad business.
Ready for it? Item number one, city clerk's report for the month of July twenty twenty-two, received and filed. Item number two, city clerk claims for the month of July twenty twenty-two, received and filed. Item number three, mayor's approval of resolutions twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine, twenty twenty-two dash forty, twenty twenty-two dash fifty, received and filed. Item number four, city clerk claims for the month of August twenty twenty-two, received and filed. Item number five, relative to the amendment of city of Niagara Falls zoning ordinance to create high-energy usage overlay district and CQ, secure determination of the non-significance.
Move it. Call the roll, if I can, I make a move to, uh, adjust, uh, amend that portion, the, um, the, the decibel.
If there's a motion to amend, is there a sign?
So Council Miles, you're making a motion to amend the decimal level, right?
Yeah, the decimal level.
To what though?
I know, amend it to, until we actually get a noise, um, a, a, a noise study? A fair noise study for the whole area? So then, once we create a decimal level that it's fair across the board with all of the adjacent, um, businesses that are around, like Frontier, you've been.
Would that cause further delay though?
No, no, it's, it's talking about changing that decimal, no, it would, you can open up the moratorium, but it'll just change that portion to s- get rid of it until we actually do it, you know what I mean? As far as just the noise level. Cause we're talking. Because we're talking over forty decimals right now. We're making this.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
No.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Four yeas, approved. This item has been approved. Item number six, relative to the rules of decorum of city council meetings.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
No.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Four yeas, this item has been approved. Item number seven. Relative to the city council voting procedures extensions. Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, correction.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
No.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Four yeas, this item has been approved. Item number eight, approval of purchase of trees for the City of Niagara Falls Parks Department, Fourth Street Division.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Item number nine, approval of Jacob S. Powers or Morris for the City of Niagara Falls Department of Public Works.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Item number ten, approval of Sabani five fifty-two replacement batteries for the City of Niagara Falls Department of Public Works.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Item number eleven, approval of purchase of snowplows for the City of Niagara Falls Department of Public Works.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Much-needed equipment for the City of Niagara Falls. Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Item number twelve, approval of bid twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, one hundred feet heavy-duty arterial tower fire apparatus.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Approval of two-way radio for the City of Niagara Falls Fire Department Aerial Tower Fire Apparatus.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Approval of bid twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, Hola Multro Tools Option for Arterial Tower Fire Apparatus.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Item number fifteen, approval of additional funding for security services. Wisdom Protective Services Incorporated, City Corporation Yard.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Item number sixteen, approval of city funding for utility abandonment, asbestos abatement, and/or demolition, Regional Environmental Demolition Incorporated.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Item number seventeen, approval of right-of-entry and access agreement Niagara County Building Trades five six twenty-seven Niagara Falls Boulevard.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Item number eighteen, approval of right-of-entry and access agreement Niagara Orleans Regional Land Improvement Corporation.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item had been approved. Item number nineteen, relative to the creation, establishment, development, construction, expansion, enlargement, and operation of commercial data centers in the City of Niagara Falls, extending the moratorium on the consideration and/or issuance of all permits and/or approvals through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Move it. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
I think that is not, um, and it also hasn't been on the supporting documents of the city website. So there could not even be any, um, response from the community here. I'm definitely voting no.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zajak?
Yes.
Councilmembers, Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Five yeas, this item has been approved. Oh, correction, four yeas, one name, this item has been approved.
That's okay, because it's been long. Let's go on to, um, speakers for Gooder Community.
Speaker number one for the Gooder Community is Dana Eric Meisenheimer.
Thank you. My name is Dana Eric Meisenheimer, and, uh, I am the owner occupant of one forty-seven seventy-sixth Street. And I would like to talk about the impact of the football league that's playing at LaSalle Middle School. Uh, it's particularly affecting the residents of one forty-seventh Streets between Perry and Buffalo Avenue. Uh, particularly people who are coming over during the practices every night of the week and all day when they have game after game after game, who are using our properties to smoke tobacco and marijuana. And also at the Verizon property right next door to my house to use as an auxiliary scrimmage field and practice field. It's resulted in damage to the house I bought in November of twenty twenty. Before that, I didn't live in Niagara Falls or Niagara County. I lived in Erie County. I work at Erie Community College. I like Niagara Falls. I've got friends up here. I'm a worship leader who serves in ministry and all over Western New York, and I chose my neighborhood. And I'm ninety percent in love with the city and my neighborhood. That other ten percent is because I will never be able to improve my house until something is done about the misuse of that Verizon field as a recreation facility when it's really corporate property. The property line is four feet, ten inches from my house. Now, I've got a phone full of pictures of garbage in that field, of cracks in my siding. Uh, I've been renovating the house since I moved in. I can't do any more work. I, I'll never be able to side it. A few weeks ago, somebody was on my front lawn smoking a cigarette. I asked him to move. I was told in a lot of words that start with F and end with UCK that I was a part of the male anatomy and that I had no right and that that was actually public property on my lawn. So I said, listen, even the sidewalk between, if you're insisting that the, between the sidewalk and the street is public property, why don't you smoke on the other side of the street? And then that was just another flurry of derogatory language at me. And I'm getting over foot surgery. I was standing in my front door with my leg in a boot. And then, you know, that, I just can't even imagine talking to somebody in their own house like this, on their own property. I would never do it. I'll tell you what, I, last week I went to the police station and talked to them about it. And they suggested I call Verizon, which I did. And I don't think I'm gonna get much mileage out of them, so I need your help, okay? Uh, I really do. And I will tell you this. Sorry. Yeah, I'll never be able to improve the property. I mean, I'm, I'm at my wit's end. I don't know what to do. The police, they were, they were helpful. They were very nice to me. I'll tell you, the officer I spoke to at the police station, if everybody is like her who serves in the Niagara Falls Police, this city is in good hands. I don't even know her name. I should have got it, okay? But I need some help. They're using it as a rec, it's really one of two things. It's either a recreational field, and if it is, Verizon needs to treat it, secure it, bound it, clean it up, and take care of it as such. Or it's a corporate property, and if it is, they need to bound it, secure it, and maintain it as such. The police officer, that's what I meant to say. When I started telling her my problem, she said to me, let me guess, this was a rental or a foreclosure? And I said, it was a rental. She said, now you know why. But I bought it and I'm the owner occupant. And, you know, this is not just affecting me directly adjacent to the Verizon property. It's affecting all the neighbors in that area. They shouldn't be playing at that field if it's not enough to contain the league. Never on the east side of one forty-seventh Street. Thank you.
Sir, can you take this card, um, this is my card. Dan will hand it to you. If you want to send me an email with your contact information or anything that you want to put in writing, I'll share it with the rest of the council and the administration. You mentioned you had some pictures. Feel free to send those too.
Thank you. And I will tell you, last year, I did send, uh, emails to everybody that was on the council at that time. About this time last year. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy Goodboys.
Hi, again. I wanted to speak quickly about the list, um, since we couldn't speak at the meeting on the agenda items. I have to say, I feel like I am addressing the autocrat and the oligarchs a lot of times here. I have serious questions. Okay, Sal Magley Stadium. I read in the paper, was it one point four million to regrass that field? I'm not sure on the amount. Who does Niagara University, they're the main people. Do they pay to use that field? Is it open to the community? I believe the people on this council are associated with Niagara University. Maybe people who are on this council should recuse themselves from different votes. If we are spending one point four million dollars on a recreational facility, the people in this city should be able to use it. Or maybe that group who has football, they can rent that field and we can make some revenue. Number two, I know that people will say I'm against child safety, which is a pile of crap. I am for child safety. I believe when I read the patrols at the schools, was it eight hundred thousand dollars we're paying the city? So we pay school taxes and city taxes, and then the cities, the school pays the policemen extra money to be there. As I read the article, it was four hours at some schools some days. Now, is that protecting our children? Maybe that eight hundred thousand dollars could be spent on social workers, um, teachers. I don't know. Maybe we should, rather than just hand that money over, we should look at the fact that maybe we should be exploring different security measures. If we can get an outside company, every week we read, the police are overworked. They work in a hundred-hour week shifts. They can't take it, but we're contracting to the school. That makes no sense. Also, on matters of the police, we have people on the student, on the city council who's, have relatives in the police department. I'm not calling out anybody on anything. I'm just saying, what makes sense, what makes sense? If we can spend one point four million at Sal Magley, why can't we clean up Bluck Park? I don't understand. I, it is beyond me. We pay taxes. I don't know, is Niagara University on the tax roll in Niagara Falls? Do they pay taxes to the city? I don't know. When I hear about Centennial Park, is this another pipe dream that will go like the way of the rest of the crappers? Okay, the convention center we couldn't take care of, the winter garden, the golf course, the Hyde Park ice rink. When we can't take care of any of those things, how are we to believe that we would do that? You said, I research on the weekend what you get. There is no way you could have researched this in three days unless you have a master's degree in something. You have no numbers, nothing. What, what are you researching? What somebody's telling you? What numbers do you have to, for this? What is this gonna cost? What is the impact? Can we maintain it forward? Everything is a pipe dream. On the corner of our busiest road, on the corner, people getting off the expressway, you drive past it, you probably driven past that hole so many times, you don't even see it. When you make a right-hand turn to go to the falls, there's a hole in the road. There was a cone in it, but people have fallen in the hole so many times, it's mushed down. Now, we can't take care of one hole. You said we don't have the, the Department of Public Works. They're beleaguered. I hear how much money we make, parking, this, that, all that rescue money, all this, all that. Hire somebody to take the trees down. It's a fortune. I've taken fourteen trees down this year. My husband's gonna retire, he's gotta work another year to pay that bill. No, but it's just not.
One minute remaining.
The man, the management of this. And you said this isn't part of the special meetings. It is. I don't want to have to sit here and talk about how many more taxes and how many more things are gonna go wrong after the fact that no matter what, it's passed. I'm so sick and tired of it, you want to pack your wagons and move out of here. It's ridiculous. They get new everything in Lewiston. How about we take some of that money, hire a tree service to get it down? The market, another thing, two million dollars on the market. That thing on the open market isn't worth two million dollars, whatever they paid to get it back. You think we're stupid. You read the paper, you read the names, everybody's connected, and that's how it's always been in Niagara Falls and it always will be, from the littlest thing to a pothole, to a tree, to who gets a contract. It's always the same names who get everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Stilinski?
Thank you, Kathy, for signing me in. Um, the school buses were late today. What's that? So we talked about decorum. We talked about business owners coming into this body, seeing this circus. Can I get a raise of hands, which business owners in this building right now are tired of this circus? You guys, business owners tired of the circus? Are you happy with the circus? Recusal. They're right. I'm also a business owner that is very tired of this circus. And I don't think Dante's the problem. Last year, we talked about trees. Last year, during a storm, a tree fell onto my house, fully blocking my driveway, knocking down my electrical wire. It's actually on video, if anybody wants to see it, because I have surveillance cameras. Meanwhile, my wife was flying home from Europe that day, and I could not get out of the driveway. I called the city. I called three-one-one. I called, um, Public Works. And guess where I got? And we'll put you on the list. Did it take down a power line? Yes, it took down the power line. We'll put you on the list. I talked to a friend. The friend says it took down a power line. Called National Grid. Amazingly, about four or five hours later, the tree was gone. So this is something that the city or a business has the ability to do. Maybe not the city, but it is possible. Maybe not the city, but it is possible. It's not impossible. You're all working on the budget, so think about that. You all, well, two of you worked on the budget last year. Think about that. Number 19, the extension of the moratorium. How many extensions of the moratorium did you guys have for the short-term rentals? Four? I think, uh, Restino took office in January of 2020, and there's a moratorium for six months, a moratorium for six months. There was a little gap. I bought a house. Got it in the process. There was a moratorium, and then another moratorium. And, and during those moratoriums, two people up on this council said, we're perfecting it. We're perfecting it. And, and at that time, um, Mr. Kennedy, who's no longer on the council, said, oh, really? I haven't heard anything. That was September 2021. Another moratorium, another moratorium. In June, the moratorium was lifted. There was, there is a three-month window for those grandfathered-in, such like myself, to comply. Today, remarkably, is the last day of that moratorium or that compliance date. Guess who wasn't here? The person at code enforcement that figures things out and helps the customer.
One minute remaining.
You guys. I'm not saying you guys. Well, actually, all of you voted on the moratorium in, um, January, the last one, and then voted on the ordinance in June. So each one of you said you'd, you'd take care of it and you'd do it right. Well, I'm here to tell you, if you're doing it right and there's one person taking care of it, why's he not working today? I said this before, and I'll say it again. You act all smug and smart up there, but you guys are dealing with real people's livelihoods for a political agenda, and you look around at all these boarded-up houses, and who's to blame?
Our next speaker is Lakia Perry. Lakia Perry. Our next speaker is John Cooper.
Good evening, council. I'm John Cooper, Director of Development from the Niagara Falls Mission right down the road. And something you said this evening, Councilman Miles, is that a lot of people are going through a lot of things. And that is true, and we get most of them, um, who are going through a lot of struggles in this community, and we're happy to take care of them. And one shocking statistic, when I started working there in, in February, was 15% of all of our clients were veterans. And I, myself, am an Afghanistan War veteran, just moved back there, just bought a house in Niagara Falls, and happy to be here, uh, this past month. And we decided that this was something we needed to take care of. Um, as these meetings before us bring our problems and take care of, coming up with those solutions, and that's what we did as well. We are having a ribbon-cutting for our veterans shelter, which is an emergency shelter for homeless veterans within our building. All of you should have received an invite in the mail. I'm just here to confirm that you guys are aware that it's happening. We would love to have you there on Monday at 3:30 for that ribbon-cutting. And I'm gonna take a little bit of time just to explain, uh, some of the issues that a lot of these guys have when they come back from the military. I don't know if any, have any of you guys served in the military? Okay, so some, just some, some of the issues that you, you face when you come back, is a lot of the things that we've seen in war really do affect our day-to-day life. Um, and it's not an excuse for a lot of decisions that are made because of that, because of what we've seen. We signed up for that. We knew what was gonna happen. Uh, we should deal with it. However, a lot of people can't, and so they end up on the street. And it's a, 11% of the entire homeless population in the United States of America are veterans. And this is why it was such an alarming need for us. A lot of these guys, myself, I was a, I was an infantryman. I was a sniper. Section leader was my job. So I was literally trained to live on the street. That was what I was trained to do. So I got kicked out of the military. Times get rough. Or not kicked out, but I go out of the military. Times get rough. I go back to what I know. We all fall back to what we know. And so a lot of guys, that's what they're experiencing, and that's why we want to step in and we want to help. Not only doing the emergency shelter, but also a veteran pro- whole veteran program to help connect them with the VA and a lot of the services that our VA offers, which are great services that they offer to our veterans. And also a support group for these guys, so they can get connected with others, veterans in Niagara Falls who are not in their situation. And so I wanted to give you guys that, like you said, a lot of people are going through a lot of things. The mission's taking care of a lot of those problems. Sometimes we can see the problems mounting up, and we don't really see the solutions. But we're, we're trying the best we can. We really appreciate your support, and we hope to see you guys on Monday, because we really believe that the gospel of Jesus Christ is what's going to change people's lives, one soul at a time, as we advance and change Niagara Falls with you guys side by side. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Gregory Palmer.
My name is Gregory Palmer. My address is 1782 Welch Avenue. Um, a few concerns. Uh, the streets. Going down 21st towards, from Niagara Street all the way up to Pine Avenue, they've been repaved, but it's about an inch and a half from the sewer to the streets. And there's a big lip on every corner.
They're not done with the final coat yet, just so you know.
Okay, I'm just saying it's been...
They, they gotta do the final coat.
Okay, okay, point taken. Um, Walnut and 7th, on the corner there, there is a, there's some bushes. There's a stop sign. Took the red lights out, but there's some bushes. And just yesterday, as I was coming down Walnut, uh, in the far right-hand lane, because I'm, I'm familiar with the bushes, somebody wasn't and just sped out and hit me. These bushes has to be taken down or the red light put back up. Because that's not the first, I'm not the first accident this week. I think there's about three or four of them. All right, um, and I was listening at, at, at everything that was being said, and, um, just want to say that the people, the group is the most important vehicle, right? And so when we have these meetings that we're not allowed to attend... See, I grew up on East Falls Street. Memorial Park, let me be exact, 318, 1960. Um, about 35, 40 years ago, the east side was just evaporated. There's nothing there. And the name's sake for redevelopment, we gonna develop this property. Nothing has been done. And that, I don't know how that came about, but I'm for sure the people didn't vote for it. So these meetings that we're talking about having, and the people don't have any voice in them. So stuff being, you know, decisions are being made, and it's affecting a whole lot of people. Right? It's, it's just this. So I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, whether you can open the meeting up or not, but, you know, we need, our voices need to be heard. Because when you make decisions like that, you ruin a whole, that whole community from Portage Road all the way to the, to the casino. It's tore down. Even so, the city park is private, is private property. I grew up playing at 10th Street Park, the Boys Club, the Community Center, going to Miss Beck's, Red Front, Conys. I mean, I, that's where I grew up at, and it's, it's tore down. It's a eyesore, right? And the tree problem, now, I'm gonna close with this, because the tree problem, I have, where I live at, I don't have any trees in front of my house. There's a tree next door. And it, it's got to be rotten, because every time it's a windstorm, there's branches everywhere. I said, I, somebody put the branches in front of my yard for two weeks, the gar- uh, moderate disposal, then pick them up. So I had to pick them up and put them in a garbage can to have them removed. I don't own a tree, but I still have to pick up branches and stuff and that nature. You know, uh, the tree need to be taken out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, our council rules, you have to sign up 10 minutes before the meeting, so, um, I'll, I'll say to talk to you after the meeting if you'd like to talk to me.
Okay.
Is that the last speaker?
Yes.
Any last words, Ben Yon?
Um, for me, I, I'm not gonna beat any dead horses. So, uh, one, out of the spirit of transparency, my biggest goal, my biggest focus is on these babies. Because right now, I, I could care less about all of the, I'm, I'm not here to create, have a, a, a ca- uh, to be a politician, a career politician at all. I'm so different. Um, but one of the things that I'm gonna be talking about out of transparency is how are we going to address the fact that we have no more community centers in the 4th District? That's Center Avenue. That was the one that I grew up in. There is 13th Street. That's no longer. And we don't have a YMCA. I mean, I'm thankful for the work that they do. However, our YMCA is now a homeless shelter, and none of that has ever been replaced. Um, let me just dispel a myth, because I know some people are gonna have a rebuttal, not here, but a myth of the fact that, or the Doris Jones or the Packer Court Center, those are HUD brand. Those are not community centers. I have, lots of kids are here tonight. Neither one of them can go and sign up and play basketball or get tutored or any of that at any of those, because they don't live there. So my thing is, is when I bring this to the table, I'm hoping that there's enough empathy, because we're using, and I made it really clear, we're using a lot of this ARP funds that, you know, for righteous things. I'm not gonna say that it's wrong. However, um, when are we gonna reinvest back into these kids? Because what happens is, we make so many decisions around them, and then we say, and we point our fingers at them and, and accuse them of being the problem of what's going on. When kids have to find something to do, chances are they're doing, they're gonna end up doing something they have no business doing, but we leave them nothing. And we don't replace what we've allowed to be taken down and demolished. So let's find out how we're going to reinvest back into these babies. So that's, that's, that's what you're gonna hear from me in the next portion. Now, I'm still gonna talk about whatever I need to talk about. Y'all know I am. But other than that, for, for the most part, we need to reinvest back into these babies.
We agree on that. Neither do I.